I watch news.
She's all asleep.
Yeah, I know. It wakes me up on Saturday. You bad dog.
All day, Saturday, all day.
I see her on, she does.
No, I get it right back. I just left and I didn't have it.
Good, 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 yes. Got it.
Swing from a volume of the wind force. I hope he takes pictures. His wife was. He needed wing dress. Who do I get to be today? You might today.
That was a good comparison.
But see, it's never me. So I need to figure out exactly who I am today.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carrasi, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Amadis.
Here.
Mrs. Buckley.
Here.
Dr. Campbell. Mrs. Cook.
Here.
Mrs. Dobus.
Here.
Mr. Means.
Here.
Mrs. Rule. Mr. Schubel.
Present.
Mr. Stokuzi.
Present.
Seven members are present tonight.
Thank you. In June, the Bethel Park School District will be saying goodbye to one of our original Police Pals. Bethel Park Police Officer Tom Rigatti will be officially retiring on June 1st after 27 years of service to the Bethel Park Police Department and in essence to the Bethel Park School District as well. Officer Rigatti has been with the Police Pals program since it began in Bethel Park in 1990 and our students have been fortunate benefactors of his unending commitment to this program. Whether it be talking to the children about safety tips for walking or riding the bus to school, working with the schools to get children fingerprinted for ID cards, or conducting bike safety workshops, Officer Rigatti has always been there for the children. He has worked tirelessly on so many projects to benefit our schools and our families and I know I'm not going to be able to list them all, but a few that I'm going to talk about that exemplify his dedication. He has organized the annual Police Pals Pittsburgh Steelers basketball games to raise scholarship money for Bethel Park seniors who are interested in pursuing a law enforcement career. His work with the Police Pals Food Drive has ensured that needy Bethel Park families have a feast on their tables during the holiday season. Over the years, he has expanded the Adopt a Family program, again ensuring that Bethel Park families have presents to open on Christmas morning. I remember sitting on PTO council with him when we got those great Pirates and Pens tickets all those years. His partnership with Allstate Insurance brought the Reality Ride's Driving Simulator to Bethel Park High School so students could gain a better understanding about the dangers of texting and driving. His efforts to give a dying boy a reason to live will never be forgotten. Tom, your efforts to make the last months of Joey Fabus's life were nothing but heroic. What you did for that young man gave him a reason to continue living and we will always remember how caring and supportive you were of Joey and his family. You never gave up on him and he knew you were forever in his corner. It is for all these reasons and so many more that we are honored to have you here tonight so we can present you with a plaque expressing the district's deepest appreciation for all that you have done for the students and the families in the Bethel Park School District. I'm going to read the plaque that says the Bethel Park School District extends its deepest appreciation to Officer Tom Rigatti for your 25 years of unfailing service and dedication to the children of the Bethel Park School District as a Bethel Park Police Pal. 100 years from now, it will not matter the size of your bank account or the type of car you drove, but the world will be a better place because you were important in the life of a child. Tom, thank you for everything you have done to make Bethel Park a special place to live and for our students especially. It's my honor to present you this plaque. Please join me at the podium and audience, please, a round of applause. You don't have to.
I just want to thank the district for the trust that you gave to me to be around the students and to work with them the way we were able to and thank you very much for this. This means a lot to me and my family. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations. Are there any corrections to the agenda this evening?
Yes, Mrs. Cook.
Yes.
Under Personnel Committee, item number eight.
Yes.
There will be adding into the salary, if you would write that number down, $70,000.
That's 8A1. Thank you.
Correct.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda as corrected.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7 to 0. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 24th, 2015 and the special meeting of April 7th, 2015.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7 to 0. I need to announce executive sessions held April 7th, 2015 for Personnel, Other Legal Matters and to receive information. April 21st, 2015 for Personnel, Other Legal Matters and to receive information. And April 28th, 2015 for Personnel, Other Legal Matters and to receive information. Staff report and Dr. Stark.
As the 2014-15 school year winds down, accolades for our students continue to rev up. Here are the latest items of good news to share with you this evening. Earlier this month, 60 Bethel Park High School students were inducted into the school's chapter of the National Honor Society. These students all have a minimum of 3.85 grade point average and embody the four pillars of the National Honor Society: Scholarship, Character, Leadership, and Service. Congratulations to all of this year's inductees and thanks to State Senator Matt Smith for delivering this year's keynote address. Six Bethel Park High School students earned two first-place and one fourth-place awards at the Science Olympiad competition, which was held at California University of Pennsylvania. Congratulations to first-place winners Katherine Kimes, Casey Mack, Maria J. and Sean McLean, and to fourth-place winners Paige Davidson and Grace Evans. Two Independence Middle School 8th graders also had success at the Science Olympiad. Rachel Holt and Victoria Slawinski worked together to earn a second-place award. Congratulations to both of these young ladies. Three Bethel Park High School students won awards at the Pittsburgh Regional Science and Engineering Fair, or PRSEF. Congratulations to Jessica Beeman, Jeff Hoffman, and Jack Brownfield. These students competed against more than 1,100 students in this event that was held in Heinz Field. Several Bethel Park High School students won awards at the Family Career and Community Leaders of America, better known as FCCLA, state competition. Earning first place and qualifying to compete at the national competition were Haley Hannan, Megan Mulhair, Ashley Wentz, and Miles Turner. Fay Greiner and Michaela Coller earned a second-place award and Abigail Beatty, Cassie Cipriani, and Emily Hury received third place. Congratulations to all of those students and good luck to the four students at Nationals. Bethel Park High School seniors Peyton Brooks and Raul Toledo have been selected as Bethel Park High School's recipients of the 2015 Shasta Award. Each year, two students from each South Hills Area School District Association member high school who have overcome personal obstacles to achieve success in school are honored at a luncheon that is held at the South Point Hilton. Congratulations to Peyton and Raul and best wishes as you continue to pursue your dreams. Bethel Park High School and Independence Middle School Latin students did very well on the 2015 National Latin Exams. Jenna Parriton, Avery Hill, Courtney Mans, and Vinnie Tavalletti earned magna cum laude certificates, while Sarah Ivan, Alex DePrampero, Paige Davidson, Joey Wright, Morgan Gleckel, and Christian Smetana earned cum laude certificates. Congratulations to all of these students. In other Latin news, several high school Latin students were inducted into the National Latin Honor Society. Congratulations to senior honor chord recipients Erin Copeland, Emily Kucan, Emily Marzina, Adam Musciano, Keith Powell, Olivia Shank, and Vincent Tavalletti, as well as underclassmen inductees Julia Angotti, Emily Augustine, David Erzen, Carolyn Vanna, Joey Weston, and Natalia Young. Bethel Park High School junior Corinne Habistrait was awarded an all-expenses-paid summer study trip to Germany. Corinne was selected as a national winner after scoring in the 94th percentile on the 2015 Level 4 National German Exam for high school students. Besides qualifying with a high score, Corinne submitted responses to several short essay questions in German and English and was interviewed by a committee of high school teachers and college professors of German. She would be one of 44 outstanding high school German students to participate in this program that is made possible through a grant from the Federal Republic of Germany. The Rotary Club of Bethel Park named Bethel Park High School junior David Erzen its March Student of the Month. Each month, the Rotary Club recognizes a Bethel Park High School student for outstanding contributions to school and/or community. David was recognized for his efforts to coordinate the random acts of kindness during Wish Week at the high school this year. Congratulations to David. Bethel Park High School Akil Rajasukar performed with excellence on the Pittsburgh section of the 47th National Chemistry Olympiad and is one of the 1,000 students who scored high enough to advance to take the three-part, almost five-hour national exam with the hope that he will be one of the top four scorers on the exam and will represent the United States in the International Chemistry Olympiad. 16,000 high school students took this exam and it is an honor for Akil to be one of the 1,000 top scorers. Congratulations and good luck, Akil. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School sophomore Carly Lynn Mansfield, who was selected to attend the Congress for Future Medical Leaders, which will be held in Boston in June. The Congress is an honors-only program for high school students who want to become physicians or go into medical research. Carly Lynn will represent Pennsylvania based on her academic achievement, leadership potential, and determination to serve humanity in the field of medicine. A group of Independence Middle School students participated in a Google Hangout panel discussion with their peers from Brentwood, Cannon-McMillan, and South Fayette Middle Schools, as well as local experts to discuss the magazine article "Apps of Hate." The students read the article and discussed how harmful certain social media phone apps can be when negative and untrue things are posted about people anonymously. Also joining the discussion was State Senator Matt Smith, who talked about PA House Bill 229 that, if passed, would make cyber harassment of a child a crime. The online panel discussion was extremely insightful and the students came away from the discussion with hope that there are adults out there who care and want to help them. Participating from IMS were Matthew Casaldi, Jerry Vargese, Parker Loora, Alyssa George, Alexa Barrett, Jessica Ashton, and Emma Petrick. A special thanks goes to IMS Principal David Minch for organizing this meaningful event for all of the participating students. A group of Independence Middle School students did a fantastic job creating an exhibit that focused on what they have learned this year by participating in the district's one-to-one Chromebook initiative and they shared their findings with educators across Allegheny County at the Allegheny Intermediate Unit's Learning Together Conference, which was held at the Sheraton Station Square. Presenting at the exhibit were students Alyssa Kane, Annette Barnhart, Lake Hagerty, Kelsey Rogers, Lily Wilson, Maura James, Molly Hoffman, Patrick May, and Sarah Gilliam. The students prepared all of the materials for the exhibit, including business cards, handouts, a Google Slide presentation, and a website. In the morning, Bethel Park teachers Dylan August and Jesse August joined administrators Ron Reyer, Janice O'Rourke, David Minch, Joe Rossi, and myself in a presentation about the one-to-one initiative that was attended by administrators and teachers from all over Allegheny County. It was a proud day for the Bethel Park School District to be included among the classroom innovators in the county and it was made special by the students' participation. Independence Middle School 8th grader Alyssa George earned first place in the 7th and 8th grade poetry category of the Pittsburgh Pirates Writing Contest for her poem about Jackie Robinson. Alyssa's poem about Jackie Robinson's nine values of success was one of more than 3,800 entries submitted to this competition from students representing 140 area schools. As the first-place winner, Alyssa won free tickets to the April 15th Pirates baseball game, which was also Jackie Robinson Day. Tickets for herself, her family, and her English teacher, Elena Hickson. They were able to attend the pregame awards banquet before Alyssa was recognized on the field in advance of the game and was presented her award. We give her congratulations and hope that she keeps on writing. The students at Franklin Elementary School participated in a service project to collect school supplies and backpacks for orphans in Zimbabwe. The collection netted enough backpacks and supplies for 23 students thanks to the PTO parents who helped the students to pack up the supplies to be sent to Africa, thanks to everyone who supported this very important endeavor. Memorial 2nd grade students in Mrs. Shaw's classroom hit the campaign trail to try and garner votes to be principal for the day. The students created original PowerPoint presentations that talked about themselves and what they would do to change Memorial for the better if they were elected principal for the day. Some of these, some of this year's campaign promises included no homework, being allowed to wear pajamas to school every day, putting a cotton candy machine in the hall, and installing a swimming pool in every classroom. The students gave their presentations to their parents and families who were allowed to cast their votes for who they thought should be principal for the day. In a close election, this year's principal for the day is Cody Roberts. Congratulations and good luck to Cody. And that concludes our report for this evening.
On a nice light note there. Thank you. I don't see anyone here from student government, anybody from PTO councils.
Kind of.
Kind of, okay.
I was asked to share this evening.
Okay, great.
PTO, so.
Wonderful.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kenny Patterson. I'm principal at New Armstrong Middle School and on behalf of the PTO, I will be delivering their report this evening. Abraham Lincoln is very excited to receive playground upgrades this year through Community Champions Grant of $500. A big thank you to Camilla Hendrick-Bondra, who applied for this grant on behalf of Abraham Lincoln and to the PTO. The reading program Book It was very successful this year. Many students earned Book It bucks for the book fair that will be held during the week of March 18th. Way to go to all the students and thank you to Kelly Bloom for heading this committee and all the classroom volunteers for making it so successful. Lincoln held a Chipotle Spirit Night fundraiser that was spicy. Thank you to everyone who supported Lincoln and to Stephanie Lindblom for organizing this event. Family Movie Night was scary. Well, not really. Fun was had by all who came to watch Monsters University and another special thank you goes out to Jamie Alderman for organizing this event. Memorial. Recent PTO family activities at Memorial include the 4th grade spelling bee, another successful Five Below fundraiser, a talent show, and a talent show that was held at IMS. William Penn PTO held its Read-a-Thon fundraiser. Students were asked to get sponsors to support them by the amount of books or minutes read. A class in K through 2nd and 3rd through 4th that raised the most money would receive a $25 gift card to a bookstore and a popcorn party. Mrs. Williams 1st grade class and Mrs. Seraphinus 3rd grade class won. The William Penn PTO had a spirit day on March 26th. The William Penn PTO kicked off the Character Trade Education Program this year by asking all students to wear a special color that coordinates with the trade of the month. This month's trade is compassion and the corresponding color is pink. The students wore pink on Friday, April 10th to show their compassion. The William Penn PTO held their ice cream social and dance on April 12th at the Bethel Park Community Center. The kids enjoyed ice cream sundaes while dancing to music. The PTO also raffled off a new 20-inch bike, $30 in iTunes gift cards, and a summer fun basket. They also had a Spirit Night fundraiser at Chick-fil-A on April 23rd. Ben Franklin just had another successful art and ice cream social. The halls were full of children's artwork bought to us by Ms. Ritchie, the art teacher, and all the families got to enjoy ice cream sundaes from Sugar and Spice. The students are looking forward to their Scholastic Book Fair on May 5th through the 7th. All the students are gearing up for the school spelling bee on May 15th. George Washington Elementary. Last week, the students and staff of George Washington showed off their talents at their annual talent show. This week, George Washington is celebrating Staff Appreciation Week. The staff was treated to a breakfast Monday morning and will be having a luncheon on Thursday. This evening, the We Run Club will have an annual trail event. Students, parents, and staff will run a mile on the trail to get ready for the kids marathon this Saturday. Next week, George Washington will be celebrating Student Appreciation Week with dress-up themed days, special treats from the cafeteria, and an assembly with magician Rick Smith Jr. Sports Day is coming up on May 27th and Family Fun Night will be held on May 29th. Neil Armstrong. NAMM's PTO changed direction this year and instead of overwhelming parents with fundraisers and business-like attitudes, we extended our friendship and got to know as many people as we could. The PTO took advantage of many lunch periods to get to know every child. We focused on family events to earn money as we need, money that we needed. The goal was to show that every NAMM's family, we were there to support them and give them as much as we could. We showed that we are just as involved in their children's lives as the elementary PTO's. We got a great response and will continue to build this bridge. Throughout the school year, we've been able to offer Popcorn Fridays and open the school store. We funded the Battle of the Books program, bought T-shirts for the whole school, paid each team's field trips of an average of $7 per kid, hosted the biggest winter wonder Santa shop ever, hosted an anti-bullying, smoking, drugs, and alcohol car smash. That was good times. We hosted a Spirit Month, which included Ice Cream Social at Brewster's, a community basketball game, and bingo, and the first bingo at NAMM's in over eight years. And we hosted a charity carnival for several charities. We are looking forward to our 5th and 6th grade Fun Days and being a positive in every NAMM's family. A special thank you to Ms. Nieda Wright for raising over $300 for us. Knowing the support that we've received from the beginning and throughout the school year really made Staff Appreciation that much more special and meaningful. NAMM's PTO is confident we gave students, parents, teachers, and principals a fun year and look forward to doing it again. Thanks to everyone for their support, including students, families, principals, teachers, staff, and the school board. And I just left Mr. Rossi and Mr. McCormick up at the, at NAMM's with the talent show, their first annual talent show at NAMM's. So I got to see about half the acts before I headed over this way and they'll actually be doing a day performance for the 5th and 6th grade students too. So really excited about that. The kids were doing, the baton twirling was just beyond me. I could not, yeah, it was awesome, so. IMS is preparing for Staff Appreciation Week and will invite the staff to a Staff Appreciation Luncheon on Thursday, May 7th. If anyone is interested in volunteering, please contact Laura Hoffman. 7th, 8th grades, 7th grade social and 8th grade special day. Planning is also on the way for 7th grade social and 8th grade special day, both to be held on Friday, May 29th. The 7th grade social will take place during lunch periods and 7th graders will enjoy a special treat. If you'd like to volunteer for the 7th grade social, please contact Ginger Delalo. 8th grade special day will be held at the high school stadium. We'll include a DJ, inflatables, airbrush, tattoo artist, dodgeball tournament, and all the food an 8th grader could eat. That's impressive. If you would like to volunteer for 8th grade special days, please contact Jessica Magnew. Thank you very much and congratulations to PTO for all their hard work.
Absolutely. And thank you for giving that report. How are things going for you at NAMM's?
Excellent. I'm enjoying it. It's kind of hard to leave tonight, but this was kind of a favor for them, so I figured I'd try to do both tonight for them, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
And I saw my student government rep came in, so we'll call student government now.
Hi. So this past month in student government, we've been extremely busy with executive board nominations and appointments. So we have our executive board for next year all lined up, including my replacement, who will be either the next meeting or the meeting after. I'll introduce you to him. And also Staff Appreciation Week is in, not this week, but next week. During the week, this, during lunches, students can send up to two carnations to any of their teachers they'd like, for free, no cost at all. So we sponsor all that and then we have our Lunch Lady Luncheon next week and also our cookout. So that'll be a fun time next week. And also, the Senator packets have gone out for student government, so everyone in student government will be, will be appointed for next year pretty soon. All elected. So I'll be elected soon.
It means the year is really winding down.
It is, yeah. It's almost over. It's kind of sad.
I can't believe, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Solicitor's report.
I have some administrative reports.
Thank you very much. Did we have any committee, any committee reports? Any public comments on agenda items this evening? Then we'll move into business items, Curriculum Committee and Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are six items this evening under curriculum. Would any, like, any of those held out?
Could you hold out number four, please?
Any others?
I guess I just have a question. Probably a solicitor question on number five. We didn't put any costs associated with those, though when we discussed them at the committee meeting, we had costs associated. Do you feel there should be, if there is a cost, should we be approving that within the motion? So then I would say, hold out number five so we can add the, not to exceed costs. I have, I have.
You have it with me?
Staff development funds, yeah, I have.
Okay.
I'll just read it.
All right. Under curriculum this evening, I move number one, the approval of curricula. Number two, the Al testing software. Three, Education City. And six, independent study.
Second.
Items one through three and six have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry 7 to 0. Mrs. Buckley.
I move number four, the pre-calculus book purchase.
Second.
Item number four has been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Amadis. Any questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, I have a comment. The cost for this is because there's a bubble of kids coming through who need the pre-calc and we don't have a number of books to accommodate them. I am going to be voting against this, not because I'm opposed to supplying what is needed for the pre-calc, but the school board has already indicated we're willing to speed up the implementation of the Chromebooks and I think we have to be able to get the textbook costs under control. And there are a number of free textbooks you can use with the Chromebooks and I just think we have to more efficiently use the Chromebooks in order to hold down some of the costs.
I'd also like to say probably that Ms. O'Rourke took the time to investigate the possibility of renting these books and she said that it was more cost-effective to purchase them. So, and the idea is, once we're done with the books, then we'll sell them. Just to make you aware of that.
Right. That's how I understood it as well. Any other questions or comments on this item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That carries 6 to 1.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend item five so that 5A would be at a cost not to exceed $509 from staff development funds and item 5B would be at a cost not to exceed $950 from staff development funds.
Second.
Item five has been amended by Mrs. Cook and seconded by Mr. Amadis. All in favor of this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7 to 0. Mrs. Buckley, will you move it as amended?
Yes, thank you. We're moving number five, the conference request as amended.
Second.
Item five as amended has been moved by- Item five, as amended, has been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries seven to zero. Personnel Committee and Mr. Amadis, will you take that point this evening, please?
I will. We have eight items under Personnel Committee this evening. Would anybody, would any of these held out?
Yes, I'd like item number two.
Number two, any others? Hearing none, I move item number one and number three through eight.
Second.
Thank you.
Second, okay. Somebody say second.
Item one and three through eight under Personnel have been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry seven to zero. Mr. Amadis.
Yes, I move number two, approval of extra-duty people who have responsibility for.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Item two under Personnel has been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, Mrs. Cook, under the appointment of the head basketball coach, I want, I'm going to vote no tonight on that appointment, and I would just like to make that statement public. So, I don't know how we, how I can vote no on just one, is there a way just to vote no on that particular person?
No.
No, they're not.
Okay, so we need to amend the motion. Mr. Amadis, will you amend the motion to exclude the basketball coach?
Yes, I, I would make it an amendment to number two to approve all, with the exception of the high school boys' basketball coach.
Second.
Item two is being amended to exclude the high school basketball coach. That is moved by Mr., amended by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mr. Means. All in favor of this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven to zero. Mr. Amadis, will you make the motion as amended?
I want to be clear. Are we making, am I making the amended motion, or we can be voting on?
We're going to be voting on all the items except, and then you'll have to make another motion for just the one position. Correct.
Good. I move number two as amended.
Thank you.
Second.
Item two, as amended, has been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Again, the amendment is just excluding one position from the list of, of the extra-duty responsibilities under number two. Any questions or comments on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven to zero. Now, Mr. Amadis, I need you to make one more motion for me.
I move number two, high school head coach, boys' basketball.
Second.
Item number two, the approval of the head coach for boys' basketball, has been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries six to one. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Spakusa.
Sorry, my microphone's stuck on the ground at the table. Seeing three items under Facilities and Services this evening, would anyone like any of the items held out separately? Hearing none, I move the following approval. Item number one, approval of door replacements at the administration building. Item number two, approval of the door replacements at George Washington Elementary School. And item number three, purchase of carpeting for the Washington Elementary School.
Second.
Items one, two, and three under Facilities and Services Committee have been moved by Mr. Spakusa and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on these items?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Karazee, could you give us a brief rundown on number three, the $155,000 for the carpeting?
The carpeting, most of the rooms, it's ten rooms, all raised, including the office area and the gymnasium.
And, and just for the record, the state of the carpet was in what condition and approximately how old?
The state of carpet was really, really bad. I'm guessing it's probably twenty years later than the calls. It might be a little bit, maybe fifteen in the classroom, but it's really bad.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments on these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry seven to zero. Mr. Spakusa, will you continue on with Finance Committee?
Absolutely, thank you. Seeing five items under the Finance Committee tonight, would anyone like any of them held out separately? Hearing none, I move the following five items. Item number one, April 2015 salaries and bills. Item number two, March 2015 financial report. Item number three, budgetary transfers. Item number four, approval of student services contract. And item number five, awarding of the food services contract.
Second.
Items one through five under Finance Committee have been moved by Mr. Spakusa and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
Just a general comment, Mrs. Cook.
Yes.
I'd like to just note that on item number four, approval of student service contracts, that our administration has done their due diligence, and they're trying to move as many students as possible to having it done in-house, and there's a potential for savings by doing that of up to $42,000, and I thank them for looking into that and really trying to save when we can. Not only will it be saving dollars, though, it'll be better for those students on top of that. That's, that's the thing I think that should be key.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry seven to zero. I'm going to back up for a minute because I failed, as we were making all those motions, to congratulate Mr. Keith, who is in our audience, and welcome him to this new position within our district. Thank you. And now, we'll move to Policy Committee, and Mr. Means, you just need to do a.
Just an announcement. Yeah, there is one item under Policy Committee, and that's the second and three readings for policy number one thirty-four, the wellness policy.
And there were just minor changes. We had discussed those at our meeting last week, just some minor wording changes, and that policy is online on our website. Any public comments this evening on anything you wish to address the board about? We're doing a great job, is that, is that what you're saying?
Oh, that's pretty funny.
Board's comments?
No comments this evening.
Mr. Means.
I just know it's a very hectic time of the year for teachers and students trying to wind everything up. You have tests and finals, and the last papers due, and graduation plans and everything else going on, so I'd just like to wish everybody the best in wrapping up a successful school year.
Sounds good. I can't believe it's that close already. Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. I would just like to acknowledge once again all of the awards and accolades and for Mrs. Flota and Dr. Starr for putting that report together. That's my favorite part of the meeting every month. And also to acknowledge the National Honor Society induction. It was a very nice evening, and the IMS students who presented at the AIU did a fantastic job, and we're very proud to be in the audience, and that those were our kids up there. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Spakusa.
Yes, I, I agree with Mrs. Buckley. It's really great to see the awards. I always go on the website and I check Facebook and see all the good things, and I like all the great Bethel Park things that are going on. And, Bill, I want to say one thing, take off the tie. No more ties.
I personally like the tie.
No, it looks great, but it gets stuck in machinery and whatnot, so it's a better idea. And I guess I have to say, Mr. Rigatti now, still officer?
Still here.
Officer, thank you so much. Tremendous thing that you do. And I've attended several of the banquets that you do for the students and for the community, and it's a great event, and it's, I can see that everybody enjoys, has enjoyed what you've done. Thank you very much. And I, and I have to say that I always learn something new at every meeting I come to, and I'm going to just tell you, I made a note at the beginning of the meeting, and Mrs. Starr said, "In other Latin news." I'm not sure I've ever heard that before. And I thought that was tremendous. Yes, and that was tremendous. Yeah, that was, that was great, I mean.
Thanks for pointing that out to us. I missed that one.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm.
Mr. Schimble.
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge Officer Rigatti. No, no better community person, police officer, and baseball coach. Also, district made a couple of great hires, in Mr. Keith and our basketball coach, Mr. Bears, and I think everybody's going to be pleased with both gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Amadis.
Yeah, and to reiterate what everybody says, when I sit up and look at all the accolades that are passed on from our students and our staff, again, I, I probably said it before, and if you listened, nothing gets done without the cooperation of everybody within the entire community, those working in front of the cameras, those working behind the cameras and behind the scenes, and that's why we have the good community we have, and we will continue to have, as long as everybody's involved.
Absolutely, thank you. Mr. Brede.
Well, I'd like to take a moment this evening to thank Allegheny County Council member Sue Means and the members of the Allegheny County Council for passing two proclamations last fall that honored George Washington Elementary School and Neil Armstrong Middle School for earning the Governor's Award of Excellence in Academics for the 2012-13 school year. The proclamations have been forwarded to the principals of both schools to share with their staffs, but I wanted to publicly acknowledge the efforts of County Council to bring recognition to our schools. Also this evening, sixteen schools in the Allegheny County area competed in the DataWorks Data Jam, and I'm proud to announce that the three teams from Bethel Park took first place, second place, and third place, a clean sweep. I'm sure that Mrs. Flota will be sharing additional details next month, but the news was too good to keep under my belt tonight, so I thought I'd share.
Again, some heavy competition.
Again, some heavy competition, I might add. All of the best schools in the region were there.